...cast by Milford TV. There are members of the Milford Daily News and the Town Crier in attendance. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, just let any member know, and we'll make sure you get it. Thank you, and welcome to all of you. Scott said earlier, the room's full.
I said, we should have sold tickets.
First agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has every member had an opportunity to read the minutes? Kind of a motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor? Yes, I'm sorry, one abstention, Joe was on vacation. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Any members have any announcements, correspondence? Scott?
Mr. Chairman, just, yeah, certainly want to wish everyone a happy new year, and certainly welcoming everybody back to school. Did have an opportunity to hear from several teachers, and just said, it was a very peaceful break, and they're certainly getting back and happy back in, back in session, and everything has been a smooth transition back into 2017, which is, which is great. And I also did, just as a follow-up to the last meeting, I did also have some teachers reach out to me, and were there very thankful for the, for the email the, the previous Friday before the holiday, and added some great clarity to the holiday policy. So, looking forward to our further review of that in a few, in a future meeting, but wanted to make sure I did follow up with a thank you to Kevin and the administration for the, for the clarity to the staff on that. So, thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit about, on that and the policy. Any other member?
Just a few announcements. First, I just want to remind the community that Burton has the Outstanding Teacher Award. Community applications are due on January thirteenth. The recommendation forms are available on the MPS website in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. Also, the Scope and Sequence Night for the Milford High School, which is open to middle school and high school families. Administrators and faculty will share scope and sequence, course offerings, and specialized programs that are available at the high school. I think it's going to be a fantastic night for anyone who has questions or wants to learn more about all the great things that Milford High School has to offer. We also have a special education open house coming up on February sixth. It's open to any family or community member, as well as, just to remind the committee that next Thursday, from eight-thirty to ten a.m., we have our school committee walkthrough scheduled, and I'll send an email reminder out to the committee as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Seeing nobody, we move on to the next one, recognition of student athletes. First one is the varsity cheerleaders, who were the Hockamark League title and state champions. Peter, how do you want to handle?
You know what, maybe have the captains come up front?
Yeah, why don't we sit down in your class?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the rest of the team kind of stood here, and then...
Yeah, sure.
The captains, whatever else.
So, go ahead, tell us a little bit about the event.
So, I think, well, we won states, which is outstanding, and coming off from last season, from winning a state title, also, there was some, like, stress on us.
Pressure.
Pressure, because, like, we didn't want to let the coaches down, and, like, show everyone that we could definitely come back and win again this year. And I think our coach Heather definitely gave us the encouragement that we needed to be able to win.
Oh, yeah. So, with that pressure, we knew that we had to stay motivated, and as captains, we tried our best to keep our team motivated, and Heather definitely helped, and we had an awesome fan section this year. Our parents were really supportive this year, which was awesome. So, we won all of our four invitationals, which are just kind of like practice competitions before the actual league, regionals and states happen. So, we won four, all four of those. We won grand champs at three out of four of those, and then we lost at leagues to Attleboro, which was one of our toughest competitions throughout the whole season. And then we won regionals for the first time in seventeen years, which was pretty awesome. And then we won states for the third time in the past four years, which was an awesome accomplishment for all of us.
Wow. Wow. Where was it held?
Tenthouse.
Oh, Tenthouse.
You're asking all the hard questions tonight.
At some high school, huh?
Yeah.
Beautiful high school.
Yeah, it was really pretty.
Now, how many of you are seniors, so you'll be moving on this year? I always ask that question.
There's eight of us, right?
There's eight of us.
Yeah, there's eight of us.
Eight of you?
Yeah.
Ooh. You got some quality to fill in?
Yeah. We graduated ten last year, so it was a little tough, but I think they'll be all right.
They did a great job.
I'm sure they did, I'm sure. Because you had a great coach, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Any member? Scott?
Yep, so just congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
And the one gentleman who I don't think is here, I can't see.
No.
But certainly a great job. You guys have, you know, continued to make us proud here as, as school community members, and certainly as parents and community members. So, just couldn't be more proud of you, of all that you've accomplished. Seventeen years, and winning the league championship is impressive, but, you know, back-to-back-to-back now state champions?
Well, it was regional championship for the first time in seventeen years, but it's three out of last four, so thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen. All in different divisions, might I add, which is something that I don't know any other cheerleading team in the state has done. Throw that out there.
That's incredible. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work, and look forward to seeing if you can do it again next year.
Yeah.
No pressure.
The softball team did it, just saying.
We can do it. I'll have to come back and visit you next year.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to all of you. It's certainly good of your hard work, not only this year, but all four years of high school, and probably years before that. And again, I'd like to say congratulations, and thank you to Heather, because I know you're such a dedicated coach, and your results are amazing.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, three out of four years is a dynasty in, in the making, and, you know, to John's point, Heather's done a great job at this program, and the cheerleading program's really, I think, a model for athletics in, in Milford. I know Peter is a big proponent of creating a relationship between the high school and the youth leagues, and Heather's done that for years now, and, you know, we can see the, the success and, and the outcome of, of having that relationship. So, great work, congratulations to all of you. You know, the underclassmen have some big shoes to fill here, but I'm confident that they'll, they'll do it.
Thank you very much.
Also, just to reiterate, congratulations to all of you, and it's great that you're all here tonight. I was just curious about what your practice schedules might look like, and when you start, and how many hours a day it takes to get to this point.
We started as soon as we could, which is the week before school, I think.
Okay.
Before school starts, yeah. And then we practiced four, five of the school days. Yeah, four to five.
Four to five of the day, of the school days.
Depending on if there's a football game, or whatever it is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, Peter, to, you know, to congratulate you and Heather as well, you know, what I hear in the community is that, and not in a bad way, but for years, Milford was predominantly a football, basketball, baseball-type community, and now to see all these other programs having success says a lot for all of, and all the people that are involved. So, I want to say great job, not only to you guys for winning, but the athletic director and your coach for, for pulling it off.
I've been coaching since two thousand and two, so it was a long time in the making for me to have my first state championship in two thousand and thirteen, but previous to that, the one, before that was nineteen ninety-one. So, we've been working hard. I've been building relationships, coaching a lot of them since they were five and six years old. So, been working hard to, to get the program to me.
Well, back-to-back wins, it shows your hard work, taking it off. So, do we have a, a small video of yourself?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the video from this.
All right.
You guys want a backup?
Yeah.
This way, Chris?
Why is it like skipping?
All right. It was on the school.
I don't know what's happening. I don't know what's happening either.
It's just reopening.
Okay. Yeah. I didn't touch it.
No. I was going to ask you, but I felt so far believed you.
It's broken. It was working.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold on. Give it one more try.
If for some reason that doesn't upload, we can put that on the website, so everybody at home can see that.
So, while we're waiting right now, any of the seniors, do you guys know where you're going to college?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So, where are you guys applying?
Uh, Western State.
Where else?
Uh, UMass.
Okay.
Mainly around here.
Okay.
Yeah, same with me. Bridgewater, Framingham, Westfield, Worcester.
Okay.
Yeah, I went to, like, UMass, UNH, Westfield.
Okay.
That's all that, yeah.
What about some of our other seniors that are back there?
Eighty.
There was eight, I heard there was eight of you.
Well, I applied to Bridgewater, Plymouth State, UNH, and Burdenham College.
And what's your top, top choice?
Uh, Bridgewater.
Okay.
Good call.
All right.
Are any of you looking to cheer when you get to college? Hoping to? No?
Probably.
TV.
Oh.
It sounds...
It was sounding, I don't know if it's working anymore. Just do acapella.
It's a long two-and-a-half minutes.
Awesome job, awesome. Okay. All right, guys, we have some gifts for you.
Yeah, very good without being announced.
Okay. Come on right up.
Congratulations, great job. Congratulations, great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have two kids that are...
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I ask her one more question?
Yeah.
Heather, Heather. Who's calling? I am. Sorry. I want, so after I watch that, I, do you choreograph all of that yourself? No, I have help. Yeah, no. But it's not like you go out and you buy a choreograph? No, there's, we, you hire somebody. We hire somebody to do choreography. There's no way I could, uh, keep up with everything that's new. So, there are people that do it professionally. Okay. Yeah. And then, I mean, there are tweaks. It's not exactly the same as when they came to give it to us, so I make some changes and work along the way to what works best with the kids, but somebody does come in and work with them. Yeah, just for two of the kids in our, that's amazing. Thank you.
And I think?
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
So, Kevin, are you up next for the cheerleading competition? I want to see, you're going to get up and do some backflips?
Absolutely. I can usually do a triple.
Nice.
I think I'll do the backflips. I got everything else covered.
Triple Indy.
Triple Indy, yeah, triple Indy.
Okay, next is the boys varsity cross-country Hockamark League champions. Come on up, fellas, with Mr. Boucher.
So, Coach Van Kopp couldn't make it. He's our second-year boys head coach, and he had childcare challenges tonight, so I told him not to stand in, it was best I could to help. But he's done a great job building the program. You know, second year as the head coach, we split the boys and girls teams and have separate coaches now, so he's done a tremendous job among these guys. Unbelievable. Twenty-two years since their last championship, right, guys?
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
How many runners?
We only had like seventeen.
Seventeen.
Wow.
It's a small team.
And what do you use, a traditional twenty-six mile course, or what do you use for a course? Miles?
Uh, three-mile course.
Oh, three-mile, oh, three-mile, wow. How many, how many games did you win?
So, we went four and one on...
Or matches, I guess.
Four and one on the season. It was very good. It was a lot of the team coming together. We really, really, you know, we do what we wanted to do.
So, if you, if you, to run a three-mile, say, cross-country marathon, how much are you training? How many miles are you training?
It's a lot depending on, really, who, who it is on the team. So, like, Jack, our top, being our top guy, he'll run, I don't know, like, forty...
Yeah, it's around forty miles a week.
Forty miles. We have different kids, different, different places on the team, maybe twenty-five and above. It really depends on the skill level.
You're running forty miles a week?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a commitment.
Mixing with tempo workouts and, uh, speed workouts on the track. Yeah, it's up to that.
Plus your schoolwork and school and...
Yeah, yeah, balancing it all.
Student athlete.
Yeah.
Must be in really good shape.
Right. A lot of it has to do with the coach knowing the individual runner, and setting different workouts, and the guys and the gals on the cross-country team, understanding that Jack might need forty to forty-five miles, you know, a week, while someone like Chris might only need thirty, but more speed work. So, he really shifted up and, you know, worked hard at making sure each guy in the team really was prescribed what they needed, and that they embraced forty miles a week. I don't like driving forty miles anymore.
Now, do you spend time in the gym as well, lifting and things like that, or is it strictly out on the road?
Not as much. It's a lot more of the distance running than it is the weight room.
We do a core work, like, every other day, but not too much upper body.
Wow. Well, great job. Any other member?
Certainly, congratulations to you guys.
Thanks. And really, just, an incredible accomplishment, you know. Again, we're so very proud of you guys and all the work that, again, another, another championship being brought into Milford.
Yeah.
Um, you know, twenty-two-year drought in between, not quite the Red Sox, but it's pretty close, right? So, that's awesome that you guys were able to bring this into Milford, and, uh, you know, just the beginning of, of more great things to come. What, uh, what year are you guys each?
Uh, I'm a senior.
Okay. Uh, I'm a junior.
I'm also a senior.
Okay. Where are you guys headed next year? Do you know yet, or where would you like to head?
I'm running track and field at Holy Cross.
Wow, good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, I don't know where I'm going. I haven't decided yet.
Are you hoping to run there as well?
No.
Joe?
When, when did you guys get started with running?
Um, so, we had, we run captain's practices pretty much every day over the summer, like, the week after school ends, and so we've been running ever since, pretty much, most of the, most of the team has.
And in terms of your running career, did you guys start when you got into high school, or were you doing it before then?
Yeah, I was, I, I started in high school.
I started my junior year.
Junior year?
Wow.
Wow.
Wow, he started late. You can run that distance?
And he's running for Holy Cross.
Yeah.
You're right. It's fantastic. And it seems like it's one of those sports where people don't even consider it until they get to the high school level, but, um, you know, I think we had some success at the middle school level this year.
Yeah, we actually had league champion last year. We had some teams doing well. Couple of your children have run cross-country here and there, so, you know, on the committee. But, yeah, I, I do think adding a seventh and eighth grade team is exposing more and more kids. You know, we had a lot of kids that ran fall cross-country, and I think it's, it definitely made an impact on the girls roster this year. They had at least a dozen kids that we probably wouldn't have come out as freshmen. I think the boys, we had a couple of guys who had, who joined immediately that made an impact at the varsity level, and there's kids who are, you know, freshmen who are still working their way into the varsity lineup, but I don't think we would have reached them if we didn't have that middle school opportunity. So, hats, hats off to you guys, to be honest with you, for green-lighting that, that idea a couple of years ago, so.
Well, we don't mind doing that when we see the success.
Yeah, it's huge.
You know, so, great job again. Any other member?
I'm just, congratulations, the dedication that you guys do to run forty miles a week, let alone drive, like you said, Peter. I mean, that, that's great, and you guys, I'm sure you guys are good students in school as well, so hats off to you. Congratulations.
Come on over, we got a little gift for you.
Thank you.
Great job.
You can use it when you're running in the rain.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Have a good night, guys. Congratulations. That's awesome. Yes, we do. We have...
Waited patiently.
Uh, yes. Boys varsity golf Hockamark League champion. Come on, sit down and tell us a little bit about it.
This is old Pat, and he was here last year, so he's getting used to this. Yeah, for sure.
That's good. There you go. All righty.
Tell us, tell us about it.
Tell us about it. Um, well, it's at Blue Hills Country Club. Um, and I just played pretty decent, and, and, and won.
What was your round?
I shot seventy-five, I think.
Seventy-five for eighteen?
For eighteen, yeah.
What was the power?
Seventy-two, seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
Yeah.
You shot a three-over?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's a very, I'm not sure he was playing, I, I played that course, not at seventy-five, but like you said, maybe at nine, I was in the seventies. That's a very, that's a professional level course, to shoot seventy. Uh, you know, anything, for me, at a ninety, that'd be great, but seventy-five, for him, he was probably disappointed that he didn't par. Am I, am I close? You don't want to par, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
That's just the way he competes. He's a, he's, the kid's ferocious out there, but seventy-five on a course like that, where they have pros playing, is phenomenal. Twice going to the college he's going to, and...
Where you going, I was just going to ask you where you're going to school?
I'm going to Hartford.
Oh, yeah?
Uh-huh.
Play golf down there?
Yeah, looking forward to it, so.
Well, we made a hawk, by the way.
Yes, eight years.
Yeah. Colors of the same, well.
Yeah, it looks like Milford, so I, I wear it all the time now.
Now, what do you want to study at, at Hartford?
I want to study business.
Oh, good. Good for you.
Yeah, so, I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be fun. So...
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And, again, incredibly proud of you, and, uh, again, you've, you're a repeat visitor to us.
Yes.
So, we always like to see that.
Hopefully more, more in the, in the future.
That'd be great.
What, uh, what division is Hartford?
Division one.
Division one?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
So...
They're a quiet, you know, division one golf program. They're one of the best, certainly in New England, but definitely on the eastern part of the United States. So, for them to be interested in him, and to sign him is, you know, it's a, it's a big, it's a big plus for the family, for him. It's, it's great for us. We love him. I mean, I can't wait to maybe go down and see a couple of matches if we have a little bit of time, so.
Yeah.
Close instead of signing them to Miami.
Yeah.
Good call.
And I see you brought your fan with you.
Yeah.
Which is good. I, I was going to say, do you get down into the southern area in, when you're playing, when you play for Hartford?
Yeah, not so much in the fall. The fall's a lot around here, but they play fall and spring. So, in the spring, I know this year, they're going to California, Las Vegas, South Carolina, Florida. I think they go to California twice, actually.
That sounds awful.
So, there. Oh, yeah.
Somehow you'll suffer through. Do you need a caddy?
I do want a caddy, but I would, I would love one.
Well, the reason I ask is, of course, in those climates, they play all the year. Those kids have an advantage over, you know, you come inside in the winter and come back out in, in early spring.
Yeah. That, that was definitely, um, like, a deciding factor. A lot of people talk to me about, like, if I go down south, like, I'll be playing all year, and then if I stay up north, obviously I won't be. And then, uh, actually, I was playing one day at Charming Rock, and someone that Keegan Bradley used to, I don't know, he used to be his coach or something like that, when he was, when he went to Hockington or whatever, and he said to, like, pick your education over, over golf, because, because if it's meant to be, it'll be, it, it is meant to be.
That's great advice.
Yeah, so Keegan Bradley went to St. John's up here, over going down south. So, I figured I'd stay up here, too.
That's great.
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to add, because I think a lot of people play the Hope Dale course. He's the youngest winner of that annual competition, right?
Yeah, the college championship.
They got about sixty texts that day, because I, I wasn't there, it wasn't anything for Milford, and, I mean, they just couldn't talk enough about how well he played to beat everybody, and then what a great speech he gave at the end, and how he handled himself. I was, we're all proud of him, but I was especially proud of him that day, and how he, that's what we talk about, Scarlet Hawk twenty-four seventy, and he just did a wonderful job representing, you know, Milford High School, and, and Milford in general, right next door, and winning, you know, most of his, don't even dream about, forget about, I just like to play well. I wouldn't even think about winning an, an open invitation like that, so, um, he's, he's going to be hard to replace next year for sure, because we were lucky to have him.
Joe?
Yeah, obviously, as everyone said, very proud of you, everything you've accomplished.
Thank you.
Is, is there any young talent on the team that you've been able to mentor, or that's going to be able to come in and fill?
Definitely. Me and, we actually have, we have a lot of seniors graduating. I don't even know. I think we have, we had six seniors. So, um, but, there's Riley Lynch, Andrew Fowler, but, yeah, there's, there's a, there's a bunch of, of young talent still on the team that I think will definitely hold their own. And even after them, there's a couple freshmen that are on JV that were, that were good, and I think, did we have a freshman on varsity? I don't even know. I don't think we did, but, yeah, there's definitely some talent coming up.
Well, I think what happens, too, is when you have somebody of his caliber, it just sort of explodes, and people want to become part of that. And to be truthful, you know, Mrs. Benak, and, you know, Kevin, and the committee, we're fortunate enough to have a JV team. So, we get kids in early ninth and tenth grade, so that they can contribute at, hopefully at the eleventh and twelfth grade. But you have someone like him, who contributes walking in the door, people want to emulate him. People see his name in the paper. He's on Twitter all the time, on Twitter, and your Twitter, and, you know, and it's just, he has patted us on the back and really encouraged the program, probably for the next five or six years, without a doubt, of, you know, just bringing what he brought to the table, and how he conducts himself, and, and how he competes, but in a very professional manner. So, when you're fortunate enough to have someone of this level, you know, it's a shot in the arm of, of, of golf adrenaline, let's put it that way, for, for a while. It's nice.
John?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations first, and, um, and especially on hearing that you chose your college that you're going to based on education.
Yeah.
Because that is of the utmost importance. And, uh, I guess, I guess my question for you would be, at what age did you figure out that you're a much better golfer than your father?
What age?
Ooh.
You can give that to me on that.
I, I can give you, I can give you an answer, because, uh, I would say sophomore year, when I was giving him, like, eighteen strokes through eighteen holes. That's, that's when I was like, all right.
I'm sorry, wait a second.
Ooh, that's on TV.
Yeah, I shot a hole.
Wow.
No, seriously, great accomplishment.
Did you get that in the paper tomorrow?
Congratulations.
That's called me, I didn't ask that.
So, what do we get, about four years before we go see the Deutsche Bank? Is that what it is?
Oh, I mean, hopefully. Hopefully, may, I mean, maybe sooner, you never know.
Right?
I don't know.
I love it. That's awesome.
That's great.
Any other member?
Maybe my great legacy.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks.
I'll tell you a real quick story about it, how important education is. I have a I'll tell you a real quick story about it, how important education is. I have a very good friend of mine who's on Pellet Judge in Massachusetts that played for the Boston Celtics in the late nineteen sixties. And he said Red Auerbach took such an interest in every player as far as education goes. He walked up to him one day in the locker room and he said, Malcolm, what are you gonna do with the rest of your life? And he said, I looked at him, Mike, and I said, this guy's gotta be out of his mind. He said, I got a college education. I'm playing for the Boston Celtics, the greatest team in the NBA. And he's asking me when I'm gonna do it the rest of my life. And he just stood there and he kept looking at me. He said, finally, I said, well, Mr. Auerbach, I'm thinking about going to law school. He said, stop thinking about it and do it. He said, today I'm a judge because that man took an interest in me and made sure that I continued my education. So, that's the important thing. Get your education. Golf will always be there.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, so. Well, come on up. We'll give you a little present. And you definitely need one of these.
Congratulations. Great job. I'm proud.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If, if I may, just take a quick moment to mention that Milford TV had given Coach Boucher and I the opportunity to go down and do a show a couple of weeks ago on the importance of students involved in athletics and co-curricular activities. And I think that what we saw tonight exemplifies how important it is for students to get involved in school activities. Because it's what they learn about themselves and about the others, folks on the T, the other kids on the team and, and the play and the coaches. And I think it's, we recommend them. And we heard of those students tonight going to some very good colleges and universities and inspiring younger players, mentoring younger players. And so, if folks in the community haven't had a chance to see that yet, uh, first of all, thank you to Milford TV for giving us that chance to go down.
That was actually fun.
Yeah, it really was.
It was a good time.
Um, but we really want to see all our students involved in co-curricular activities because we'd love to bring them all in one day to present to you and, and celebrate their accomplishments. So, thank you for having us.
You know, the theme that I see through the, three very different sports in very different ways to become skilled. And I think what you see, at least what I was able to see, I see them every day, but I don't get to see them encapsulated. I think you see commitment. I think you see pride and I think you see expectations. And I, you know, for a team like Heather Johnson to turn it over again and again, it's expectations. It's, it's the Bill Belichick, okay, next person's up. We graduated ten seniors last year. We probably shouldn't have been in the finals, but she finds a way and the team finds a way to hammer out, not just to win, a championship season. You know, you get a cross country team that gets it together and says, we want to be champions. We, we're gonna run every day, you know, through the summer, hot, cold, sweaty, whatever. You get a golfer, you know, it's lonely out there all by yourself, the way he's gotta practice. And, you know, you take those three components, you merge them and, you know, we'll just, hopefully we can keep bringing kids as often as possible.
As Chris said, he didn't even start running until he was a junior.
And now he's going to Holy Cross on scholarship. So, that's very.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good stuff, so.
Great for him. Well, thank you both for everything you do.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is middle school east. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss about middle school east?
I could jump in here real quick. Um, we really don't have an update at this point. The long range planning committee's meeting on the nineteenth will kind of reengage in those discussions.
Okay. Next agenda item is report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Kevin McIntyre.
All right, I'm just gonna pull up my notes. So, I'm just gonna give the committee a quick update of where we are with the rave panic system. Um, Dr. Joseph has taken this on as a project and he kind of gave me a little bit of a timeline of, of what he's done this fall and where we're going. And basically, uh, Dr. Joseph has worked hand in hand with, um, the Milford Police and, and the, and the Milford Chief on, um, you know, how, how we're gonna use the system, what the, um, vision for the system is and how it's gonna support and assist us with, um, nine-one-one emergencies. He then met with, um, each of the building principals to talk about the program, um, collected the information, basically the, the phone numbers and, um, email addresses of our, our faculty and then, um, put it into the database. And the next step is really, um, to create kind of the directions for the system so we can start to roll out use, which is happening this month in January. Um, create messaging for the staff in the training protocols and then, um, work with the building principals to ensure there's a consistent rollout and message about the process and the tool. And then support the staff throughout the district in downloading the app. And hopefully by the end of January or early February, we'll be live with the rave panic button in the district. Okay?
Any member have any questions? Scott?
I just want to say thank you, Kevin, for the update on, I, I know it's, uh, that was something that we talked about at the last meeting, so I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman, for adding that to the agenda and Kevin for the update. Um, I'm very pleased to see that we're combining the technology as well as our continued very strong partnership with Milford Police Department. They've always continued to be just such a great partner and support of us. Um, so I'm, I'm pleased to see that this is gonna, you know, we're gonna see a further rollout of this. And again, we talked about education, we talked about sports, we talked about all the things that we talk about here as a committee. Um, it all, at the end of the day, safety is just so paramount, um, in a world that really we just, you, you never have to look very far to see the craziness that goes on in this world. So, um, it's, it's, it's always good to see that we're, we're continuing to, um, stay diligent around keeping our students, our faculty and our, and our staff very safe.
And Chief Alafon has been a champion of this program and a huge supporter of the Milford Public Schools every day.
Just as you go through the process, if you could periodically give us updates, that would be great. Great, I appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe like February, March when we're really kind of rolling it out, I'll, I'll kind of put it back on the agenda if that makes sense.
Great. Any other member? No? Okay. Next agenda item, report of the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction and assessment, Mr. Kinsigley.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I just want to start with, with, this is one of the reasons why I was excited about this position in the first place. Uh, professional development for us, uh, and as a district, um, hasn't been, I, I think, where it should be. We need to be more purposeful, uh, have better differentiation and be more strategic in, in the way that we offer professional development for our staff. I think in the past, um, we see a need and then we offer a one-off training on something, then we move on to the next thing. And as a result of that, teachers feel like that we keep putting things on their plate, uh, and with no real follow-up, no real development. So, we call it professional development, but what we're really doing is offering professional learning opportunities with no development of whatever the idea is. Uh, so moving forward, the part that I'm most excited about is, is we're working together with teachers, curriculum leaders, um, principals. And we're starting to develop tracks for teachers so that teachers could have a course, a course of study really, throughout the year where anytime we have opportunities for professional development, like half a day or, um, a contractual hour here or there, teachers have this track of study that they're really focused on one area, um, whatever it is, social emotional learning. They might have all these different, um, learning opportunities that are associated with the track. Therefore, they could take that, create their professional goals around it in the evaluation system and things would really start to tie together for our teachers, um, where they feel like there's a plate with all these different things on it. Now it'll feel like it's all connected and there really isn't a lot on our plate. It's just, um, it's all part of the day and it's all connected in what we're doing anyways. So, we're starting that really this, uh, January thirteenth, which is our first half a day really to, for any kind of professional development. And all the principals have put agendas together. Um, we've made it transparent for everybody so that everybody in the district's starting tomorrow is gonna be able to see what every school's doing and what every, uh, position in the school is doing. We've been really purposeful in including everybody and trying to differentiate for everyone, including VAs, TAs, um, special ed people, counselors. Anybody in the district is gonna have something that's geared toward them. And hopefully next year, we'll have a string of things for them so that they could then have fifteen, thirty PDPs, which will then tie into the licensure. Um, so that's where we're headed with professional development. So, I just wanted to just give you a brief overview of where we're going with that.
Is it, um, being relatively well-accepted?
Oh, yeah. I think people are really excited about it because it does feel like, jeez, now we have a purpose for whatever's happening on a Tuesday or whatever's happening in a half a day. I know in advance, I know that it's gonna be meaningful for me and I know that I'm gonna be able to connect with not only people in my building, but people across the district.
That was my question. Will they, will they professional, do, perform professional development in their own school or are they allowed to go another?
No. That's where we're, we're headed towards. In the past, I think, unfortunately, you know, I, I speak for myself as a principal. You want to keep everybody together and you're trying to want to work on school initiatives. But by doing that, we end up having siloed schools where this school's working on something, this school's working on something else, and this school's working on something else. And this school might be doing something really great, but it never gets over to this school. And, and we really want to have that, um, cross-school collaboration that we haven't had in the past. So, hopefully by doing something like this and offering and allowing teachers to choose, uh, and, and hopefully we need the flexibility of principals to allow for teachers to go off, um, we can get that. And we can have schools that have similar experiences.
You can almost develop the same cultures, too.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, that was one of our, our, our big points from, from the summer is we want to develop this collaborative culture, uh, throughout the district and the continuous learning, so.
Any other member? Scott?
So, Craig, um, you know, one of the things that, I, I know you mentioned that this is one of the things that you were very excited about.
Yeah.
Candidly, it was one of the things that I was very excited about when I heard that you were gonna be taking on this role, knowing the work that you did with Woodland and the professional development that you did for your team. Um, it is so imperative and I'm so very, very pleased to hear you talking about connecting the dots and helping the te, and helping professional development actually be one piece building on one another. It, it's what our teachers do in the classroom with students from September to June every single year. And what we hope to do through curriculum for our students, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's very pleasing to me and very exciting to see that we're actually doing the same thing with teachers. And it was something that I always candidly felt as well, it was somewhat disjointed with the professional development. It would be, we'd sort of pick an initiative, we'd do something on it. And then the next initiative, and it may not be anything related. So, it, it's great to see where they're, we're following that same pattern and, and that learning style. So, um, I'm very excited to see how this continues to build out and, and certainly a great job, so.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Joe?
Yeah, just, I've got a couple of questions. Um, a few years ago, we, we talked about the possibility of using technology for professional development and maybe recording some of the sessions, some of the presentations so the teachers can access it at a later point. Or if there's a session that's happening at Woodland, but teachers from Brookside could potentially benefit from it, they could watch the video and take advantage of that. Is that something that we're considering?
Um, I think that's something to consider. I don't think we're there yet, honestly. Um, we have done some webinars and, and some different, um, I'm trying to think. I know that there's some Google webinars out there that, that people weren't able to go to training on Google. I know that Matt, um, Dr. Joseph has done some webinars that, that teachers do have access to. Um, things like that. But, but other, other things where we're sharing ideas, I think it's important to have the people in the same room. Um, where it's not necessarily a training that we're doing, it's more of a, a collaborative discussion or, or we're learning from each other where, yeah, I can watch it, but I'm not gonna get the same experiences because I'm not bouncing ideas off of people. That's, you know.
To, to that point, are we also looking at, um, vertically aligning teachers and bringing te, certain subject matters together for professional development?
Good point. Yeah, and, and, you know, I, for instance, today I was actually talking with, um, Matt Bayon about, we have an upcoming CTL meeting, uh, on the twenty-fifth. And for him to sit in a room with the middle school guidance counselors and the high school guidance counselors and talk about programming, not only at the high school, but what's it look like at, at Stacy and what should Stacy guidance counselors be preparing kids for as they get into the high school? So, yes, we are, are having those discussions. Um, and that is part of it. It is part of, you know, there's a lot of value in, in teachers from the middle school, for example, getting into a high school classroom and vice versa, high school people getting into, you know, it doesn't seem it, but seeing what's going on in elementary classroom and, and seeing how elementary teachers deal with certain, um, classroom management things. So, yes.
Jen?
Yeah, I also appreciate the update. And, um, you know, I know we hear a lot of updates here about some of the great things going on with athletics and, um, and that's always kind of one of the showcases of any school district, especially when you have a high school. Um, but I think, uh, focusing on the academics and for us to get some of those updates is really helpful to highlight and showcase those also. And I appreciate broadening definition of professional development, because I do think teachers sometimes get used to it's a one-shot deal and that someone has to come in and develop us. Whereas we can have a lot of job embedded professional development, which it sounds like what you're talking about, where teachers can learn from each other.
Right.
Uh, and have those opportunities to develop teacher leaders along the way, too. Um, and I think the more they're invested in what they're learning, the more our students are going, um, to reap the benefits of that. So, it sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other member?
Can you just jump in real quick, Mike? Um, what I love about Craig's plan is that he's looking at the short game but as well as the long game. So, there's, there's a lot of planning going into what's happening this year and a lot of planning kind of went into this year. But he's also looking the long term and really setting some structures in place that I think are really gonna take us to a whole different level in terms of what we're offering and make it a little more, um, sustainable than that kind of, you know, that must-get-shot kind of model of professional development.
Very nice. Good job.
Fantastic.
Good job. Okay, next agenda item, report of the assistant superintendent for business and human resources, Mrs. Perry.
Yes, I have the committee's approval this evening. Six warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Motion from Scott, second by Joe, all in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor.
The third warrant is in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion from Joe, second by Jen, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion from Scott, second from John, all in favor.
The sixth warrant, I'm sorry, is in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Motion from Joe, Marais, second by Jen, all in favor.
And the last warrant is in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Motion from Joe, second by Scott, all in favor.
The committee also has a request for, uh, course reimbursement approval. That is in the amount of twenty-two thousand, ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, Marais, all in favor.
The committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting. No vote is required.
No vote is required, you said? No. Do you have anything else?
Nope, that'll be it for the evening.
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Perry? No?
Actually, I apologize. Um, Kathy, if we can just, um, can we get an update from a budget perspective? As I know we're gonna, I know we're, we have an, an action-packed Saturday planned for our budget, the beginning of our budget season. Can we just get an update on where we are with, um, I would imagine we are near the ending of our expenditures for the Woodland project, but can we just get an update on that?
Oh, sure.
And I, we probably put that under future meetings, but we'll put it here. Um, just get an update of where we are in that process and, and how close to, um, where we are in our, from as far as percentage to budget, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other member? Next agenda item is subcommittees. Joe, on budget?
We have our budget meeting Saturday, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure we'll get, uh, a lot of information then. Uh, the only other update is that we did have a meeting with the FinCom a couple of weeks ago prior to the holiday break. Um, the primary focus of that discussion was around technology. We just continued some previous conversations that we had. Um, Matt had given them a presentation, uh, a few weeks prior to that, so they had some follow-up questions, um, that we were gonna answer for them. And we'll, we'll give you a broader update on Saturday.
Okay. Okay. Policy update, Jen?
We met tonight before this meeting and, um, as we agreed to at the last meeting, we revisited the religious poli, religious observance policy, um, with a little bit of reflection, but more of an understanding that we'll be looking at that over the next several months.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and reflecting on what, what worked, what maybe didn't work, what could be tweaked, um, in order to find a resolution that works for everyone and feels equitable for all. And we touched on the turf policy, uh, turf field policy for the new Woodland school field. And, uh, a couple of things that we will also be addressing over the next couple of months, knowing that the field will be in operation, I believe, as of August for the community.
August first, yes.
August first. Uh, we'll be talking about lighting and schedules for lighting, as well as a schedule for reserving the field and how that will all work.
Thank you. Any questions from any member? No? Okay, next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to have added to the future agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, actually, uh, there's three things I'd, I'd like to request, if I may. First one would be with regards to, actually to what Jen just brought up with regards to the turf field.
Okay.
Um, specifically for the high school. I believe we're now heading into, is it year five? Um, I know initially the, the life expectancy of that field was approximately ten years, so about halfway through it. Um, we had built out, um, costs in accordance with when the field was first built, um, for rental costs. Um, that was in alignment to make it a community field. to make it a community field. I just wanted to see where we are as far as being able to recruit and start to plan for that cost, um, and maybe part of a budget conversation, but just seeing where we are with the life expectancy, what's the, what's the timeline, um, knowing that in the next couple of years, and as a town, we do really well when we plan for things, and not nearly as well when we don't.
Yeah.
Um, so I think if we can start that dialogue now, I'd like to see that as part of a conversation.
Actually, to, to jump onto that, too, Kathy, what would be good is, you could find out how many times it's actually been, they use the term raked, they take the machine to it.
Right.
I believe it was supposed to be one, I, once a year, wasn't it? And every year until we get through the ten-year cycle, if you could find that out for us, too.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Just, just so we know it's being maintained properly.
So life expectancy means?
Well, yeah, life expectancy was ten.
It was ten years.
But over the ten-year span, it was, there, it was a machine they used to kind of regenerate it.
Um, so that's the first. The second one is, um, I always love seeing the, the student athletes, I think it's phenomenal that we do that. Um, as we head into the spring here, um, I, I want to make sure that we're continuing to recognize, as we talked about, we're, we're highlighting academics, we're highlighting athletics. I do want to make sure that we're